Please rise to the plate. Two five, United States of America, and two thirty holiday, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and moral.
Clifford Buffo?
Here.
Joanne Cowe?
Here.
Alan Shiner?
Here.
Sam Spadas?
Here.
Vivian Welton?
Here.
Juan Rosales?
Here.
Chandra Valenti?
Here.
Tanya Stapleton?
Okay, in reviewing the minutes, Vivian found some things that need attention.
Okay.
If you would mind going through that.
Did I put stuff on top of that now? Okay. First of all, I want to thank Olivia for doing a tremendous job on the long and arduous day that we had, including the Verizon Cell Tower hearing. There were only three corrections that were worth talking about tonight on one page, but I want to read them, the finished version. Actually, I could read the old versions. I read both or just the finished version?
You can just read the, yeah, you can read the.
The old, okay. Okay. So, the original version, Chair Rabuffo states he does not feel the tent is temporary according to one one six dash five nine. I'm on page seven, sorry. It's all on page seven. Chair Rabuffo states he does not feel the tent is temporary according to one one six dash eight nine. Mr. Gottlieb states it has permitted the event tent meets setback requirements, and it is said that Urban Cowboy and Foxfire do what they want, and Leeway is before the board doing the right thing. So, my correction is Chair Rabuffo, and I want to say I did read, I did look at the video, so this is all from the video. Chair Rabuffo states the planning board does not consider a recurring use temporary. Mr. Gottlieb states that it is permitted, the event tent meets setback requirements, and that Urban Cowboy and Foxfire do what they want, and Leeway is before the board doing the right thing. So, that's the full corrected text that I'm going to give to Olivia. Next paragraph. It is also said that the planning board started the secret process, and it should be type two. I'm going to change that to he also said, because this is a continuation of what Mr. Gottlieb said. The CEO Grant states that Mike Moriello requested that change. That's correct. The original text, the planning board made the change from unlisted to type two, and events are scheduled for October. That is actually backwards. The planning board voted to change from type two to unlisted at the June 11th, 2025 meeting. Mr. Gottlieb said that there are potential weddings scheduled in October. So, that's the corrected text. And the third and final correction, original version, there are concerns about the tent being near or possibly in the floodway. The board is reassured the tent will be nowhere near the floodway. Corrected, it would be, there are concerns about the tent being near or possibly in the floodway. The board is told the tent will be located in the floodway. And other than Mr. Gottlieb's misspelling of his name, which Olivia caught herself, everything else is great. And I have to apologize to Olivia, because I know it's rude to correct people in public, but all in all, I have nothing but praise for you.
Those are important changes. Thank you for catching them.
Oh, you're not close to the microphone.
Okay. All right, we received a communication from.
Do we need to move to approve the minutes with Vivian's amendments?
No, sorry, thank you, sir.
So, move.
One second. On favor?
Okay, we received a letter from Scott Olson, Verizon attorney. Dear Chairman Rabuffo, we would like to table the Verizon Wireless County of Ulster application from the planning board's October 8th, 2025 meeting. During the hearing last month, there was a discussion of two potential alternative locations, 7370 Route 28, and a property owned by Joshua Byer located above the 7370 Route 28 property. Verizon Wireless is in the process of analyzing both of these properties from a radio frequency perspective. Although the analysis was anticipated to be completed before the October 8th meeting, I learned this morning that it will not be. We would therefore like to table this to the next available planning board meeting. No, we're just, yeah, we're just not going to discuss it, yeah. So, we will not be discussing the Verizon Cell Tower tonight. Yes, Grace?
Do you want to reopen the public hearing if they think they're going to be available next month?
Yeah, let's make it, let's plan on reopening it in November, so everyone that is interested in attending gets notice for that. And since it's in flux, I don't think there's any point in discussing anything, any other aspects of that. Received a letter. We got this after the meeting, right? Aaron Bennett?
Yes.
That was after the last meeting. Dear County of Shandaken Planning Board and Building Department, I want to express a few concerns I have with the Leeway Motel project application and permit application for a floodplain development permit. As a lifelong resident of the town who has experienced many flood events, I have concerns regarding the congregation of a large number of people in locations that are very susceptible to flooding. I believe multiple flood claims have been submitted by prior owners of this property, and I suspect it is on FEMA's repetitive loss list, validating my concern. Although no new structures are being proposed, our vista of public safety increases given its proposed use as an event space for consideration by the planning board. In reading the applicant's emergency action plan, I feel it falls somewhat short of what is needed. Relying so heavily on the downstream gauge, Coldbrook, is not appropriate when better predictive, not real-time information is readily available. There are several upstream gauges, most notably Alaven, that are likely a better choice and provide stream flow information before it reaches the Leeway. I urge the applicant to reconsider utilizing the real-time downstream gauge and instead use the upstream gauge for real-time flows at the very least. However, I would strongly encourage the use of predictive flood modeling tools that is now readily available from NWS and NOAA for the gauge at Coldbrook. See the forecast prediction flow in purple below. There's a, there's a graph on here. Additionally, having, additionally having staff valet cars for guests will waste too much precious time, given the flashy nature of our flood events. History shows that most of these flood events occur overnight when staffing is at minimum. History tells us that this creek can easily rise several feet per hour. When looking at the hydrograph, stream flow versus time for Tropical Storm Irene, the Aesopus at Alaven rose 11 feet in just over two hours. On 12/25/20, the Aesopus at Alaven rose from 5.9 to 9 feet between 12:00 AM and 3:00 AM. The evacuation plan also speaks to the items in the portable kitchen, however neglects to mention the portable bathroom, perhaps it is because it is only a hundred-year floodplain, not floodway. Regardless, anything portable should be vacated from the entire floodplain so as to prevent downstream damages. Lastly, with the larger Route 28 bridge immediately upstream of the Leeway, all floodwaters will now be conveyed quicker, no backwatering caused by the smaller bridge and its approach under the bridge, through the canal, and across the floodplain towards this location. There's an attached graph. For consideration by the local floodplain administrator. The town of Shandaken is in the process of updating the FEMA flood maps for a 15-mile stretch of the Aesopus Creek to account for the new bridge and other mitigation efforts, and better data methodology to more accurately depict future flood risk. The draft mapping can be found here on this map viewer. I'm not going to read the link. This new data set is considered the best available data, as they have been provided by a state federal source and should be considered by the local floodplain administrator when making determinations and issuing permits in this stretch. What these new data indicate is that the special flood hazard area, Hundred Year Floodplain, spans to the east toward and beyond Route 28 rather significantly on the project site, now encompassing all existing buildings. While this future change to the flood maps may not impact the existing project, it will have future implications down the road. The town may wish to communicate this to the applicant. It appears that both a floodplain development permit and a no-rise certification are required for this project. The applicant noted the need for the permit since this project proposes development, excavation, filling, et cetera, in the special flood hazard area. A no-rise certification should technically be required by the local floodplain administrator as well, since the plans now show a woodchip path located in the floodway between three foot and four foot wide and four foot above, four inches above grade. This constitutes fill in the floodway, which triggers the need for a no-rise analysis determination. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment on this proposed project. Aaron Bennett, CFM, Big Indiana. I do not, just as.
Certified floodplain manager.
Thank you. All right, I shook out Verizon Wireless. Moving into old business, we got perpetual space for the Leeway project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Charlie Gottlieb. I'm with the law firm of Boyman, Osterman, and Hannah in Albany, New York, on behalf of the Leeway. Just a point of order I want to make clear for the record. Prior to the meeting starting, planning board member Vivian, I apologize, I don't have your last name off the top of my head, you facilitated a conversation with a quorum of this board before the meeting started that won't be reflected on the minutes. It's quite clear from that conversation, you were trying to persuade those board members to act a certain way this evening. So, I would ask that you recuse yourself this evening and all other meetings related to this matter.
No.
No.
May I respond to that, please? I had a conversation with Ms. Cowe, with myself and her, regarding whether or not we could table the discussion and the vote on this project. She advised me that it was her understanding that there was a deadline by which we had to have a vote. And this did not change because of the pending appeal to the ZBA, of the determination by the CEO of the letting venue becoming an accessory use to the motel. That is being appealed to the ZBA right now, which according to our lawyer, who was consulted, we did not have a obligation to either continue the process of approving or disapproving the application, and we did not have an obligation to vote or a requirement that we not vote, that it was entirely up to our own judgment, but that we could actually discuss, and we could decide not to vote at this meeting. I think that was our understanding. And subsequently, I had the same discussion with Cliff. This was not a three-way conversation at any time.
Sure, but there, just for the record, there was a quorum of the board present in the meeting room. The ability to recuse yourself is your decision, I recognize that. I just wanted to make that statement on the record.
I appreciate that you have noticed it, and I appreciate that you tried to make a comment about it, but a request for me to recuse on that basis, since you do not know the content of our conversation, or whether it was even related to this matter at hand, I think that's inappropriate.
Sure, I will say, I was sitting right there in the front row, and I heard it all. But moving on, I wasn't aware of a ZBA appeal by the opponents of the project. I was prepared to discuss that, however, because I had an inclination that they would. That appeal is what's known as a third-party appeal. So, typically, when someone appeals a code enforcement officer's determination, it's actually the property owner. You get an adverse determination, that property owner appeals it up to the ZBA. Here, it's, I'm assuming the neighbors have appealed the building inspector's determination to the ZBA, that's a third-party appeal. Under New York law, and I have the cases here, there is no stay whatsoever on this board moving forward, or any stoppage of this process. We have been here for now a year and three months for a tent. It's time to make a decision. If there is, because I did hear this discussion prior to the meeting started, if there is any condition that we, you vote on, that we have to wait for the ZBA to make a decision, that would also be contrary to the facts that are in front of you, and that would be very challengeable. The only thing you have in front of you right now is a letter that I just received from the code enforcement officer, saying that this use is a permitted accessory use to the Leeway Hotel. We can't, you have to make your decision on the information that's before you, not something hypothetically that's going to happen in the future, because those opposed to the project have appealed it to the ZBA. Yes, we will go to the ZBA. If the opposition is fruitful in that ZBA process, then we'll have to consider it from there. But this board can only make a decision and condition its decision on the facts that are in front of it this evening. So, I, we have addressed everything. This record is wildly complete. We would like this board to entertain a motion to approve the site plan and special use permit this evening. As I have mentioned, there are weddings planned in the future. To deny this or prolong this even more is just going to cause damages.
I have a question. Have, has the applicant submitted detailed plans of the 40-foot by 60-foot so-called temporary tent?
They are on the site plan with a depiction of what the tent will look like.
I, I don't, I see the site plan. Is this the site plan you're referring to?
The site plans are dated April 29th, 2005, with an addendum from last week's meeting. That includes the lighting plan. I have copies here if you'd like.
Do we have those to look at at tonight's meeting?
I think you're looking at them right now.
Okay, is this the site plan of the tent?
Yes.
That you were referencing? Okay. It is my recollection, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this tent is 60 feet by 40 feet, that it will have walls. I don't see any height or dimensions on this picture. I don't see any drawing at all. I see a photograph of a tent with a little pole coming out.
Mr. Chairman, you have a member of the planning board that is hijacking this meeting because of her prejudged aggression over this project. We have right here on the site plan, event tent, 75 person max, 40 by 60 feet.
I, I'm very upset to be told that a reasonable request for information of a tent that the applicant's attorney is stating is detailed drawing of the tent specifications, and all we have is a picture of not the tent involved, nothing about how it's going to be constructed, nothing about how it's going to be secured. I'm talking, I'm talking. Nothing about how it's going to be secured against wind that could easily blow it away. We have had winds issues in Phoenicia where the tents of the farmer's market were suddenly without a windy day involved, suddenly just picked up and.
We don't ask every applicant that's putting up a tent for wind rating.
No, I'm not asking for wind rating. I'm asking for an actual schematic of what this tent is.
So, if I may, I think you should ask your code enforcement officer. There is another layer after this. It's an occupancy permit, where the details of the tents are provided to make sure they comply with all New York State code requirements.
That is what I'm asking for. I am asking for.
This is a building, we wouldn't be judging.
It is a building. It is a building. According to the code definition.
We don't rule on that.
I have, okay, I have.
Will there be a different tent for each event based on the size of the wedding?
If there's under 50 people, it doesn't have to be as large, likely. It'll be no bigger than what's depicted on the site.
This is the maximum size.
Right.
But there might be smaller tents.
Right, if there's only 30 people there, what have you, but.
And is the tent coming up and going down every single?
Every single event through a company that's insured, that will work with your code enforcement office to get the occupancy permit, demonstrate it's properly anchored and complies with the New York State Building Code. It is not a building. It is a tent.
This will be the fourth meeting where the neighbors of this property are not able to speak. The fourth meeting in a row.
You've spoken at every meeting.
The tent is a structure as indicated in Shandaken law. Please look it up, I beg you. It's a structure. This gentleman has misled this board in a big way, in several matters.
I'd like to hear from the floodplain administrator and building inspector.
I am the CEO here, and I am the floodplain administrator. We give out occupancy permits to allow temporary tents, and once, each time that tent is put up and they apply for occupancy permit, the tent company itself provides to us the details on the tent, the fact that it's fireproof, all the detail on the tent. The location doesn't have to know all the details about the tent, but the tent company gives us that information.
Okay, I have the definition of building. It's 116 dash four, in the definitions under zoning. Building, a structure wholly or partially enclosed within exterior walls or within exterior and party walls and a roof, affording shelter to persons, animals, property, or business activity. C, structure. I'm going to look for structure. Structure, a static construction or assembly or materials, the use of occupancy of which requires a fixed location on the ground or attachment to an object having such a fixed location. Structures shall include, among others, buildings, stadiums, sheds, storage buildings, reviewing and display stands, platforms, towers, walls, fences, swimming pools, gasoline pumps, billboards, signs, and mobile dwellings. Okay?
I didn't hear tent.
I didn't hear tent.
That's a temporary structure.
Tent is in there, for God's sakes. Get the right law.
Tent is not in there, and it's not on a fixed structure.
Tent is in there.
I think that we need to see whether it is a fixed structure.
Tent is in there.
Vivian.
Tent is a structure.
Not this, but Vivian.
Sit down, please.
Is tent in there?
No.
I did see it in here.
Because these are lies, and you are buying them because they're so scary, these books.
She just read out of the book.
It's, no, she missed the part where it says a tent is a structure. It's in there. It's not hard to find.
I searched the entire zoning code for the word tent.
No, you didn't. It's in, oh, for God's sakes, give me the damn book.
Okay. Application.
A tent is a structure.
Okay, here we go.
I look, because you are buying into this.
I think we need to, I think we need to move this forward. We've been talking about this.
We've been talking about this.
Okay. I, I don't, I, okay, I would like to make a point here, that to, to equate this with a temporary pop-up event tent, which can be taken down and put up every time you plan an event, is, is quite out of the actual reality of this.
That's a hypothetical statement.
It's hypothetical. Explain to me how a 2,400 square foot footprint can be safely covered with a temporary tent without a, without a, without a way of fixing it to the ground.
If you cannot sit quietly, you're going to be asked to leave.
Yeah, good. Bring the police in, because you listen, you prefer to listen to lies, because that's what's happening.
She read directly from the book.
She read from the code book.
That we are required.
She just read it.
The code book that says, enjoy it in front of you.
She's reading from it.
That a tent is a structure. Have we gone to that point yet? Because that's what it says. Definitions under 116, definitions, a tent is a structure. Just like Alan Shiner said, like six weeks ago, before we got drowned in Long Beach.
We need to move on.
But there is more, there is more. I have a lot of things in the zoning book I would like to address. And we will be here a long time, because I'm required to address these with the code book by the board in their previous announcement to me that in order to vote no on a project, I must substantiate my arguments with the code book. I am prepared to do that.
Let's get a motion so you can say no. I'm ready to make the motion right now.
We need, we need to.
I'm not ready for the motion. I, I need to make my case, because that's my requirement as a planning board member, to look at the code book, see where it addresses the project, and I'm also required to, to listen.
This is a petition as a member of the opposition, not of the planning board.
Excuse me, I am the member of the planning board who has the authority as a group to vote on the merits or lack of merits of every project that comes before us. In the town code, it says the purpose of zoning is to evaluate each project individually for its merits, for its hazards, for its effect or potential effect, for its eventual environmental effects. It's all here in the code book. I'm prepared to list it step by step, and I highly object to being referred to as the opposition and for the. And as the town planning board, we represent the community. The purpose of this zoning book is to show ways in which.
Please get to your specific points.
Okay.
Thank you.
My specific points, okay. Purposes, as, as Sam has already read to us out of the code book. The per, this chapter is this first, the first page of the zoning code. This chapter regulates the location, construction, alteration, and use of buildings and structures, and the development and use of land within the town of Shandaken, and for said purposes divides the town into zoning districts. To protect and promote public health, safety, comfort, convenience, economy, aesthetics, and general welfare, and for the following additional purposes. To guide the future growth and development of the town in order to with a comprehensive plan of land use and population density that presents and promotes beneficial and convenient relationships among residential, commercial, and public areas within the town, considering the suitability of each area for such uses, as exist, as indicated by existing conditions, trends in population and modes of living, and having regard for the use of land, building development, and economic activity, both within and adjacent to the town. B, to provide adequate light, air, and privacy, to safeguard health of the community, to secure safety from fire, flood, and other danger, and to prevent overcrowding of the land and undue congestion of population. To protect, this is C, to protect and conserve the character, the environment, the social and economic stability, and property value, and to encourage the orderly and beneficial development of all parts of the town. To provoke, this is E, to promote beneficial traffic circulation throughout the town, having particular regard to the avoidance of congestion in the streets, and the provision of safe and convenient traffic movement. To provide a guide for public policy and action in the efficient provision of public facilities and services, and for private enterprise and building development, investment, and other economic activity. relating to uses of land and buildings throughout the town and adjacent municipalities. To protect all bodies of water and water courses from pollution and to avoid hazardous conditions and excessive damage from stormwater runoff. To encourage the wide use and sound management of the natural resources throughout the town in order to preserve the integrity, stability, beauty and good character of the community and the value of the land within the town and in adjacent municipalities. To preserve the natural beauty of the physiography of the town and adjacent areas. To protect the town against unsightly obtrusive and obnoxious land uses and operations. To enhance the aesthetic aspects of the natural and man-made elements of the town and to ensure appropriate development with regard to these elements. That is the purpose section of the zoning code book. I don't see anything in here addressing property rights of potential applicants because in my, I looked up in, in the case law. What does it say in case law? It says with the, in the absence of zoning regulations, the property owner will do as he or she pleases. Now, that's an obvious statement, but it's, it's worth saying it. You can ask me a question.
You're, you're saying you looked up in case law. Which case did you look up? What case are you referring to?
I, I'm.
Case law is broadly.
I know, I know. I'm just, I'm speaking in general terms because.
What case law are you referring to when you say that you looked up in case law?
I can, I can look for it. It's going to take, I have a lot of papers here. I can look for it.
Can I also ask another question?
Yes.
It would be really helpful for me, maybe other members of the board, if you articulated what arguments you're about to make. Because from my perspective, it looks like you're just reading from the code book.
I am.
I know, but like what could you articulate?
Oh, you mean why am I reading these particular?
No, no, maybe, but like could you say I am opposed to this on this, for this reason and this is why I'm reading from the code book of this section and I'm opposed to it for this reason and that's why I'm reading from this section of the book? Otherwise, it just seems like we're jumping from.
Because what you just read says we're pro-community and pro-development and pro-economics and pro-neighborhood.
It doesn't really.
It's just the general that we're trying to balance all these things out, which we are of course.
But it's, it has the emphasis on protecting and conserving the character, the environment and the social and economic stability and property value and encourage the orderly and beneficial development of all parts of the town. Our job is to determine that if this particular project.
Is orderly and beneficial.
Is orderly, beneficial, conserves and protects the character and the property value of the community.
I would just like to highlight, those aren't the site kind of special use permit standards that this board is obligated to follow. Those are the general intent of zoning theory.
I haven't finished. I haven't finished. Okay? And now it doesn't say, it says the community to safeguard the health of the community, to protect the character of the community. It's community-based. That's the purpose of the zoning code is to protect the community. It is understood that the property owner, somebody who buys a property, has an expectation that their concerns will be a part of the process. And I think that has been the case so far, that their concerns, your concerns, your client's concerns have been part of the process. In fact, most of this proceedings over the last few meetings have been listening to you present your case. We have not had a lot of back and forth sharing of ideas among planning board members. We have very little from the community.
None of that is true.
It, it feels like that from my point of view because when I bring, I mean, there's a lot of things that I'm saying that I'm being shut down if I say, and this is my chance to actually say it because I'm required to now as part of my no vote. And I think it's very reasonable to say it before.
So you've already voted no without a motion on the table? I'd like to highlight that for the record.
I'm declaring my intention to vote no, which is not inappropriate to declare an intention of. I am not prejudging. This is my judgment. This is the job I'm doing tonight. I also object to the community being referred to as the opposition.
They're opposing the project.
Thank you.
They are opposing your client's request.
Vivian, the client is part of the community.
Not really.
Yes.
The client is.
Business in the community.
The client owns the business in the community. Yes.
You're not because you don't live here.
I live, I live and work there.
You live right there in the Leeway?
Okay, guys, hey, up here.
Okay. I don't mean to start a fight here. I'm just pointing out that you and your wording are being antagonistic. You may not realize it, but we all see it. To refer to the community as the opposition and you are also including me and the rest of the board as the opposition. I, I don't think that's appropriate and I would like it to stop.
I don't feel like a member of the opposition.
No, none of us feel like the member of the opposition.
You're making us feel like members of the opposition.
No, he's portraying us as, he's referring to us.
I don't feel portrayed as a member of the opposition.
Okay, I, 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 I am taking back that wording. I'm saying that you are implying that we are members of the opposition.
So I looked up the definition in the code book for structure, for building and for accessory structure. I cannot find the word tent, one that comes up and goes down for each.
So just please look under the definitions. I believe it's.
She's just, she just said, this, this issue, this issue is dead.
Do you sign to do that for your intent as a structure in that book? If you didn't bother to look before tonight, it's possible.
Go on your phone and look up Shandaken E-codes.
I looked it up all day long. I'm sitting here.
None of us have been able to find it.
Because I wanted to.
You are not looking.
I wanted to double check for you.
Ask Mr. Schiner. Have you seen Mr. Schiner? He saw it weeks ago before we got involved with the lawyers. He saw it weeks ago.
Was it an old book?
It was an old book.
It could have been an old book.
Oh, that's ridiculous.
We have to use, we have to use the book we have.
These books are from 2020.
Vivian, can I ask a question to Vivian?
Yes.
I would just like to know, do you think that the other locations in the area that are getting these weekly or monthly tent permits should also be denied?
I think, I think we should entertain that. I think, I think we've discussed this ad nauseam.
I want to answer the question. I, I, Sam, Sam, we haven't had this discussion. We have not had this discussion.
Vivian, we started with four people per car, thirteen events in one season, and that was it. We now have a list of fifteen conditions that are beneficial to this town. We've done our job. There's nothing left to discuss unless you want to delay.
No, I'm not trying to delay. I'm trying to make points that I have not had the opportunity to make. We have been hearing the lawyer speak the entire meetings from, as long as I can remember. I have not been able to speak. And you interrupted, you, you, you criticized what I said and you criticized me for presumably making a statement and you said it was a personal opinion.
You said you have points to make. You said you have points to make.
Yes, can you let me talk? Okay.
Can you repeat what the points are?
I want to answer the question that I was asked. Okay?
Look, make, somebody make a motion.
No, no, I'm sorry. Let me talk, please. Don't, don't ask me a question. I want to answer it. Okay. It's a relevant question because Mr. Gobley had brought up his opinion that the zoning code requires us to approve his client's wedding venue because there were other wedding venues in the area. And.
And he lied.
No, I.
That's the fact.
I, I think that is, that is a misinterpretation of the zoning code. But besides that, the planning board never approved a wedding. They never gave a special use permit to the Foxfire for a wedding venue. It's not comparable because they never came in front of the planning board.
Because then you need one. They just operate.
No, it was never determined that they needed one. Nobody actually addressed that issue in the planning board.
And if we get to vote on this motion with these conditions, we create a precedent to have those other discussions.
No, we create a precedent. We create a precedent to do this for every possible wedding venue proposal, no matter how unsuitable the site is. This is an extremely unsuitable site and it has to be, it has to be evaluated for what it is. It can't be evaluated on the basis of any other site. It has to be evaluated on the basis of what the aspects of this particular site are and it is.
And you don't, and you don't think this site is suitable? No, no, please move on.
Excuse me. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, we did not, okay, we, we voted in the June meeting to declare this a unlisted, unlisted secret category. And on the unlisted secret category, there are, there are requirements that we evaluate. It says, okay. To require an environmental impact statement for a proposed action. This is the newer codes, rules and regulations, NYCRR. The lead agency must determine the significance of any type one or unlisted action in writing in accordance with this section. To require environmental impact statement for a proposed action, the lead agency must determine that the action may include the potential for at least one significant adverse environmental impact. To determine that an EIS will not be required for an action, the lead agency must determine either that there will be no adverse environmental impacts or that the identified adverse environmental impacts will not be significant. Now, did we declare ourselves to be the lead agency?
It's not a coordinated review.
Did we decide not to have a coordinated review?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to decide to have a coordinated.
Okay. B, for all type one and unlisted actions, and this is an unlisted action, the lead agency making a determination of significance must, one, consider the action as defined. Two, review the environmental impact state form, the criteria contained in subdivision C and any other supporting information to identify the relevant areas of environmental concern, which I will read below. Three, thoroughly analyze the identified relevant areas of environmental concern to determine if the action may have a significant adverse impact on the environment. And four, set forth its determination of significance in a written form containing a reasoned elaboration and providing reference to any supporting documentation. C, criteria for determining significance. One, to determine whether a proposed type one or unlisted action may have a significant adverse impact on the environment, the impacts that may be reasonably expected to result from the proposed action must be compared against the criteria in the subdivision. The following list is illustrative, not exhaustive. These criteria are considered indicators of significant adverse impacts on the environment and the list is below. One, a substantial adverse change in, and I'm going to skip out the ones that are not relevant. A substantial adverse change in existing traffic or noise levels. That's the first one on the list. Traffic or noise levels.
They live there.
Noise levels. I, I understand that, I, I think there is a consensus that the general non, the general objection of the neighbors, which is difficult or impossible to mitigate, is noise.
I'd just like to point out for the record, you just said the generalized objections of the neighbors.
No, the, the general objections to the neighbors. In other words, the neighbors have objections, but noise is the predominant objection. And this was stated at the last meeting because I watched the video and it was generally agreed by the board and everyone here that noise was the most significant objection.
And have the neighbors provided any technical evidence that we will exceed the town's noise regulation?
That's not relevant to what I'm saying. I'm, I'm saying that significant noise, I would say significant noise is the, and, okay, I'm going to read on. A substantial change in the use or intensity of use of land, including open space or recreational resources or in its capacity to support existing uses. Substantial change in the use or intensity of use. You have to admit that's relevant here. The encouraging or attracting of a large number of people to a place or places compared to the number of people who would come to such place absent the actions. You have to admit that is relevant here. The creation of a material demand for other actions that would result in one of the above consequences. Material demand for other actions, that's exactly what's been happening at the Foxfire.
Which is not a comparison.
It is your basis for saying that we, we have to approve this as an accessory. It's a basis for your comparison.
Look at the secret handbook, which is the DEC's implementation of those regulations you're reading off of the regulation book. That means when Regeneron comes and it's going to require four hundred new single-family homes for all the new employees, which is going to result.
I don't think that's relevant. I'm sorry. That is not relevant here. Creation of a material demand for other actions. There is many things that, that could happen under this category. A material demand for other wedding venues to be coming to us with similar requests, with similar potential issues, adding to the number of wedding venues in the community so that only one venue may not be a significant problem in some people's mind unless they happen to live next door. However, having wedding venues in other places who come and say, we must be approved because you approved the leeway, that would be a material demand for other actions that will result in one of the above consequences. I think that's one of the major reasons why we can't be rushing to approve this because of the potential to encourage other similar venues. And one may not be considered a disaster, but if you have all the hotels in the area doing the same thing with loud amplified music, loud number, loud number of people, lot of traffic exiting the venue at the same time onto a highway, that is a potential for a disaster. Changes in.
Every project.
That's, well, no, this particular project has issues. This change, and we have to address it as the issues specific to this project, not as, oh, we let somebody else do it. No, we let somebody else do it. We did not approve a wedding venue, to my knowledge, for these wedding venues that are being cited as reasons why we have to approve this one. Changes in two or more elements of the environment, no one of which has a significant impact on the environment, but when considered together, result in a substantial adverse impact on the environment. Now, we have two or more elements. We have the traffic, we have the noise, we have a substantial change in the use and retention of use. We have both a change in the use because there was not a wedding venue on the motel.
So just one thing, the traffic has been approved conceptually by the.
I'm talking.
I have to be able to rebut to what you're saying.
You can rebut at the end.
Vivian, let him rebut, let him rebut that point. Come on.
Okay.
So the traffic has been conceptually approved by the New York State Department of Transportation that has jurisdiction over the New York State Highway Route 28. The noise has been mitigated through noise monitoring devices, which can be regulated to ensure we comply with the town regulations.
Okay, this was said before by you. And I understand I do have the, the documentation of what you're referring to. The DOT did not have a problem with anything, but the entrance specifically needed to be reconfigured. But as we know by the accidents that have happened in just the last couple of weeks, change in the traffic is considered to be potentially deadly. And the DOT is, is not addressing that yet, but we're hoping they will and possibly reduce the speed limit on Route 28 in that particular area, which is a hotbed of.
That's not a discussion we can have about a state highway.
Well, he brought up the DOT. I, I'm only referring to what he's saying, okay?
They're authority on this topic.
They're the authority on this topic of whether it's legal to have a wedding venue at that place regarding traffic, but our job is not to. But our job is not to say whether it's legal and then let it, let it go by because we can't find that the DOT is objecting to it. I'm, I'm using common sense here and I'm reading this guidelines for determining environmental significance. And it is saying, traffic is a substantial, significant adverse of impact or has the potential to be. Now, what I'm reading is now, changes in two or more elements of the environment, no one of which has a significant impact on the environment, but when considered together, result in a substantial adverse impact on the environment. So we don't have to prove that there's a significant impact from traffic. We don't have to prove that there's a significant impact from noise, but the two together will result in a substantial adverse impact on the environment. So that's the...
Do you have mitigation measures you would propose to limit these impacts?
Yes, I have mitigations to limit, to limit the, the impact, which is to limit the noise level to not have any amplified music, to limit the traffic level, to, to reduce the number of people at wedding venue to no more than 40. And, but I think that's unrealistic. I don't think a wedding venue can operate at that scale with a 60-foot by 40-foot, 2,400-square-foot footprint tent was going to require amplification. And the traffic, you know, there's not much way you can mitigate the traffic as, other than being careful. However, in the flood situation, a potential flood situation, it's very hard to orderly evacuate a place.
I'm just saying that the DOT, and I don't mean this anyway, but you're not a traffic engineer.
I'm not claiming to be.
The traffic engineers at the New York State Department of Transportation reviewed the project. They are traffic engineers.
I'm not referring to traffic engineers. I'm referring to common sense, knowing this community and knowing how hard it is to have an orderly evacuation in a flood situation. And we all know that. That's not, that's not something we can say is a legal issue.
About six years in the last 15 years. Were you there? Did you miss it?
Oh.
Okay, for the purposes of determining whether an action may cause, for the purposes of determining whether an action may cause one of the consequences listed in paragraph one of the subdivision, the lead agency must consider reasonably related long-term, short-term, direct, indirect, and cumulative impacts, including other simultaneous or subsequent actions, which are, one, included in any long-range plan for what the action or consideration is apart, two, likely to be undertaken as a result thereof, or three, dependent thereon. Now, cumulative impacts, you know, it's easy to say, oh, it's only going to be 13 times a year. Oh, it's only going to be one evening. But cumulative impacts, we have to take the Fox fire, since Mr. Gottlieb is using that as an example. We have to take their example. As cumulative impacts, and also the Brophy case in Olive at the Ashokan Dreams, the impact was more than one day because the wedding venue required delivery trucks. It would require, if the tent is being set up and taken down every time the wedding venue is operating, which I think is highly unlikely, but is that what the applicant is promising? You're going to need trucks to do that. Delivery trucks at the Fox fire are large and do not fit in the road, which may or may not be an issue with the leeway. But the number of trucks and also buses that need to bring guests from other locations to the venue because there's only a very small number of rooms available at the actual motel, that is cumulative impacts. And I don't think that can be ignored. Like you said, Juan, I'm, I'm trying to make a point here by, by reading this because it is telling us what the issues are that we need to address. And they're determining in this document that these are significant issues. For, okay. So must consider cumulative impacts, including other simultaneous or subsequent actions, which are, one, okay, I read that part. The significance of a likely consequence, i.e. whether it is material, substantial, large, or important, should be assessed in connection with, one, its setting, for example, urban or rural. Two, its probability of occurrence. Three, its duration. Five, its geographic scope, its magnitude, and the number of people affected. Now, in this case, it does not, the noise, which is the impact, and the traffic is not limited to the number of people at the venue. It's not limited to the immediate budding neighbors. It is spread among the entire community, which is in the range of the sound from the amplified music that will go on until late at night. Now, 10:30 for the music to stop, that, that is not what I consider a mitigation because there are people who need to go to bed earlier. There are people that don't want to be hearing loud music.
Please, please correct me if I'm wrong. Our noise ordinance goes into effect at nine, right? Not 10:30.
It could be, uh...
Seven, seven.
I would have to look at seven.
Okay. So, okay, I'm going to deal with each one of them. It's setting. Now, the setting for the leeway motel is non-conforming, pre-existing. And it is non-conforming because it is so extremely non-conforming in its area that if you had, if you had to build this motel on the existing lot and, and if you look at this, if you look at this picture, you see that the floodway line is actually right here. Floodway line is here. All of this is the floodway. That's all undeveloped. It cannot be developed. And this area right here is the motel itself. The neighbors are, they have a 12-and-a-half-foot setback from the property line to the start of the building. They have a, less than that or possibly for the parking area. They have two cabins that are also over the setback line. That could not be approved with the existing zoning. This was built before the zoning was in effect. That makes it pre-existing, non-conforming. Now, if you were to take the setbacks required by the zoning and try to put these buildings on the lot, you would have a 50-foot required setback on either side for a building or a parking area. And that would, that would encroach on all but the very middle of this lot. And you can see that would never be approved with our current zoning. And, and yet, the leeway has been operating all these years without significant impact that caused a lot of neighborhood complaints. We don't have an issue with the motel, but the extent of its non-conformity is the reason why they are forced to make a plan to put a wedding tent in the floodway because the rest of the property is not only fully built out, but significantly encroaching on the current requirements for setbacks for commercial operations. So this tent, which is in the floodway, is the only place they can put it and have a wedding tent. I don't even know, since I haven't done a site visit, whether that's actually even a level spot. Could you address that?
Yes, if that is a level spot.
It's a level spot that will accommodate a 60-by-40?
When you come in the site from Route 28, with 20 being your access here, in general, it's... Let me get to the correct page, sorry. There are more or less three plateaus to the center. The first being where you pull in, the second being once you go down the hill, the third being down by the creek. So in general, what's happening is this is level. This is a decline. This is level. This is level here. These are very similar elevation. This is at a lower terrace than that.
Okay.
So what I'll say is the site plans that you've had for a year and three months have had elevation lines on them to show you the elevation of the property.
But that's why I'm, I'm, see, in this floodway, any building, any, any, now, the only way that this could even be approved in the floodway is as a temporary structure.
Tent.
It's not a structure.
It's...
Could I get it in the book? Could somebody give me? Because it's 116.10.
Okay. Okay, but I think it's...
Go, go ahead.
Yes.
You keep saying that you have it for a year and a half. That's not 100% correct, although you haven't been here, so I can understand why. But we haven't had the plans for a year and a half. We had to start at the plans a year and a half ago. And the plans have changed considerably monthly, okay? For objections that we've made, they've been added to the plans. The original plan did not show the tent. Am I correct? It did not show the outline of the tent.
I don't recall the original version.
But there are a lot of changes to the plan. So we're not working with the plans from a year and a half ago. We have no intention of delaying anything.
Understood.
And we never told the applicant that he should go schedule weddings. That's not our problem.
Understood.
Okay, so we don't have any objection to going through this, although some people have objections. Our main concern is that a lot of what you promised depends on somebody reviewing the actions that you take, such as you're not going to make noise. Well, how am I going to know that?
Sure, and so it might, this might be helpful because I think this was new because I don't, I haven't seen you in the last few meetings. But one of the things we propose, one is, I have a feeling that there's going to be a lot of phone calls to the building department when the first event hits. Number two, we've proposed a look-back period. So after a year of operation, 2026, we come back to this planning board and under its specially used permit authority, we evaluate, how many complaints have there been? What have the noise monitors been reading? How have operations been going? And then you can then, if there are impacts that are increased or there are problems, we can tailor the conditions.
So you're, you're willing to put into our approval a one-year...
I propose language. It's a cut and paste, it's a...
Okay. Okay, there we go.
I, I have something to say about that, which is that, that if we approve with a one-year trial period, that is saying that we are considering it appropriate to subject the neighbors to the significant environmental impact that I just enamorated for one year without any recourse other than to spy on the leeway's operations and yell at the town hall people who don't deserve it and, and expect perhaps some, some relief, which is not built into a...
Well, it is because what we're saying is, what you're, you're saying, which I've said in the past, that there's a potential intense noise problem. But if there is no noise problem, there's no need for recourse. If there's a noise problem, they lose their permit.
Is this...
So that is the perfect solution to the problem. Because what you're saying, you're giving potential problems, which I gave.
Yes.
These are potential problems. They're not definite problems, okay? There is no other venue that I know of that has all of these conditions in them.
There is no other venue that has all of these issues with the site itself, which I think that's the most important thing that we have to address, including the impact on the entire neighborhood, not just the immediate neighbors, and the impact on the community for setting this precedent of approving a wedding venue in a highly inappropriate site, which would also limit our ability to limit a wedding venue in any other site. I think that would be a big mistake.
Thank you.
So I have more things.
One, one approval does not set a precedent.
Well, he's saying it is, and he's the high-priced lawyer.
I drive a Subaru, so I'm not as high-priced as he is.
He's a, he's a high-priced lawyer that knows how to be centered. No, I have not concluded. 116.10.
Can you tell us what you think you... Well, I don't think it's out of order to say that this filibuster's been thrown off.
I'm not filibustering.
I'm...
I am doing what I'm required to do, and I object to that word.
Too bad.
I'm not filibustering. I am reading the town code. I have, we have one member who has not even read the code book. She has not received the code book. She's new.
This is not a training round. I read all the codes.
Okay.
And so I am not finding the word tent. And when the entire board votes no, that's when you are required to back it up with law.
No, I, I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
If it does not pass, we have to back it up.
Okay. That's not what the board had told me after, you were witness to that, okay? In fact, they told me I had, I could not vote no without backing up my vote.
I think you've done that. I think you backed it up.
I have not finished.
No, you...
No, I have not finished. I have more to say that has not been said. We have not done a secret review. How can we vote without a secret review?
When can we be done?
We're not talking, we're talking about moving on to the secret review.
Well, I didn't hear that.
I suppose you were talking.
Well, you were talking about moving on to the secret review, but I am moving on to...
Is it okay, is it okay to ask, Vivian, how many more arguments are you going to be making?
What's, okay. Is that an issue?
You just read the secret review.
Is that, okay, I read the secret criteria for significance. I am also now going to read the district's schedule of use regulations.
Is that, is your next argument?
And it's on page, it's on 116... Why are you rushing me?
I'm, I'm asking...
Forty-five minutes is not being rushed.
What, what... What relevance does it have? How many minutes I have left on my...
Not that I'm asking about minutes, Vivian. I'm asking how many more arguments are you making?
Sam is asking about minutes.
You're addressing Juan.
It's a very simple question. How many more are there?
What, okay, what, what? This is...
How many?
All of them.
Yes. I have a list.
Well, how many are there?
I, do you want me to take time out and count?
Sure.
I'm almost to the, okay.
How many more are there?
I can, I can, okay. I'm almost to the end, but I'm not going to promise it's going to be short because we are going to have time for discussion.
I'm not worried about the length of your arguments. I'm worried about, I'm asking how many there are.
I don't know. I have not counted a list.
I'm asking her.
One, one.
I'm asking her.
One.
You need to find out.
Let me backtrack to what you had...
Those are inappropriate questions.
Yeah, I'm talking to you.
I'm on the board.
Okay.
Yes, I am. And asking my board, remember how many...
But you're arguing against each other, which it makes no goddamn sense. It's a forum.
Okay, timeout, timeout. Juan, you were the one that asked me to actually explain the significance of these things I'm reading, which takes more time.
I'm loving it. I'm asking how many of this...
It takes more time, and that's why Sam is feeling like it's taking too much time. So let's just...
I'm not feeling that way. I'm observing that it is indeed taking too much time.
No, too much is a value judgment. It's not an observation. Too much in what context?
There's no precedent for what you're doing in the seven years I've participated.
There's no precedent for being asked to back up my no vote with the code book. And I'm doing that because you had told me that that was required. And because of that, Juan was forced to change his vote to yes because he had not read the code book yet because he was new and didn't even have the code book to read.
No, he was not forced to do it.
He wasn't forced to do it.
He felt he was forced to do it because you had required me to back up by the code book. And so he changed his no vote to yes because of what you said. Now you're saying, oh, we never, we never required that. This is unprecedented?
If you say no and have the answer of, I feel it's against community character...
He's more than backed up your vote.
Listen, I backed up my vote because you didn't know what the backup was for my no vote because nobody had, had been willing to listen to me talk about why I was voting no until after I voted no. And then I was told I could not vote no unless I had in the code book, reading out of the code book, backing up, and Juan said...
No one said you had to read out of the code book.
Yes, you did.
No, we didn't.
Well, I'm reading out the code book because you got...
We said she had to reference code, which she's done amply.
Okay, I am not done.
But please, please continue.
Okay. Okay. District Schedule of Use Regulations. The second page on this graph, Class 1 Home, okay, sorry, Accessory Use or Structure Incidental to the Permitted or Special Permit Use and Located on the Same Lot Not Otherwise Specified Herein.
This has been officially deemed an accessory use.
Not permitted in the floodway, that's right here on this page, is an X under floodway, and you can look for yourself, if it's an accessory use or structure incidental to the permitted or special permitted use and located on the same lot, it is, it is not permitted in the floodway.
But it's not a structure, it's a tent.
It's an accessory use, it is a different use. It says an accessory use, it doesn't say primary use, it's accessory use. Now, we don't even have the right to consider it until it's determined to be an accessory use, because it says on 116-10B, "Any use not listed specifically or through a similar use, as such may be deemed by the Zoning Board of Appeals," which they are going to determine that, "is a, as a permitted, special permit or accessory use in the attached schedule, shall be considered a prohibited use under this chapter." Now, that's very clear, and that's why we couldn't proceed without a determination.
But you have been provided by me.
Yes, you have, you have provided it, and that's why it's relevant, that the next page, it says accessory use incidental to the permitted or special permit use and located on the same lot in the floodway zone is prohibited, it's a big X right on the graph. Now, how clear could that, I don't understand how could that could be misinterpreted.
Just as no accessory use can expand upon a pre-existing non-conforming use, just as that, just like that, the law is so simple, just as Mr. Shiner pointed out two months ago, that's what the law says. But we let the lawyers tell us what to do.
What's your next point, Vivian?
Okay. Case law, New York Botanical Garden versus Board of Standards and Appeals. Quote, "Whether a proposed accessory use is incidental and customary found in connection with this principal use depends on an analysis of the nature and character of the principal use of the land in question in relation to the accessory use, taking into consideration the overall character of the particular area in question." Now, that is what we're considering here, the particular area in question. We're not going by precedence of what other wedding venues are in town, we're not going on any precedent whatsoever other than what we're seeing in front of us, which is a, a site which is highly problematic, when it has issues that cannot be mitigated, because noise is not something you can measure the impact on the community of, you cannot predetermine how much of a noise nuisance to the community it will be, but I think we can pretty well guess that the community will be adversely impacted, because there are already complaints from the neighbors in the past, although few, of, of people just having loud gatherings at the Leeway Motel and feeling like it's too noisy. Now, there's no comparison between that and amplified music, which echoes in a mountain valley, as we all know, because we live here, it echoes to everybody in that mountain valley, no matter how far away they are. And people at the Foxfire are having to deal with that. It never came to us for a special use permit, or even any permit at all, or even consideration as a wedding venue, we only considered it as a hotel, which was a pre-existing use, which was not a problem. Neighbor's testimony in the Brophy versus Town of Olive ZBA, "Days of disruption, beginning with deliveries and continuing through the eventual removal of the items associated with the events, and that is a total of 12 wedding events in 2015, caused that." Now, the applicant is asking for one more than that. Now, the Town of Olive, the Ashoken Dreams, was not a tiny little knot, a lot, it was a large place where a wedding venue could fit. The problem was, the days of disruption was traffic coming in and out of that area, beginning with deliveries. Now, deliveries begins days earlier for a wedding, this is not a one-shot deal, and if it was, that would be a, a problem in itself, continuing through the, of the eventual removal of the items associated with the events. Now, we're talking about a 2,400-square-foot tent, which we still don't have the specifications for.
Forty by sixty.
Forty by sixty, okay, and, and does it have walls?
No, you saw the picture.
That picture is, has nothing showing about how it is going to be tied down so that it won't blow away.
You've established that part, please move past the tent.
I don't understand that you've established it.
Stand on height of the tent.
How tall is it going to be? How tall is this tent? There's no, there's no dimensions on it.
Within the height standards that the zoning code allows.
And, okay, but let's, let's be more specific.
There might be different tents from different companies, and each tent will be differently.
Then how can we determine whether it's appropriate?
The building inspector will when we submit an occupancy permit for the tent, like every other wedding hotel venue in.
And, and what are the criteria for that?
It's not this, it's not this.
What are the criteria for it?
That's not, that's not the board's purview, that's. Everything you've read, you've read everything.
It's, it's relevant, okay, whether it's going to have, whether it's going to have any concrete footings to attach, then how is it going to be secured? If it blows away, that's a community hazard. It's a blows-away, that is a safety issue.
It's 2,400.
The responsibility of.
It's, it's larger.
Responsibility of the building inspector, not us.
It's the environmental, an environmental hazard, and our, our responsibility is to eliminate, not just mitigate, eliminate environmental hazards, because the Brophy case is a precedent in which an existing wedding venue was being restricted due to environmental impact. We have an opportunity to prevent that from happening by acknowledging that this venue, this site itself, is not mitigatable, it, I mean, forget that word, but it cannot be mitigated to the satisfaction of not having an adverse impact on the community. The community is here because they've had experience with this, they've had experience with this, we can't just say, oh, the, the property owner has rights. The property owner has, has a business that is existing, that is continuing, that is making money for them, and if it wasn't for that, why did they buy the pro, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm digressing.
Please move on to your next point.
Okay.
Absolutely accurate. They knew what they bought, and they have limitations, that's a fair point.
Vivian is speaking.
She's speaking while I'm looking at my papers. Okay, so incidental is a legal, is a legal concept, something that's incidental to a special permit use, has to be smaller in its impact, and I don't see how a 2,400-square-foot tent with 75 people, with personnel to operate the wedding, with.
That's a determination made by our CEO and then the ZBA.
Yes, that's exactly right.
That's a site plan review matter, that's why we're here.
Okay, I think I can stop there, but we're going to do the secret review, is that correct?
Yes.
May I make one comment, Cliff?
No. Is it a new, is it a new comment?
Very, very good.
Go ahead.
Former town supervisor in Shandaken for a long time, been here all my life.
Yes.
Once you let the horse out of the barn, you're not going to come back in. It's naive to think that Town of Shandaken has the facilities to enforce noise, crowds, development of land in the floodplain, it's totally naive. I leave you with that point. I appreciate Vivian's intensive research on this matter, which became a very significant problem in the Town of Olive, it caused damages. Thank you for what you tried to do, but we know where you're going, it's going to be, it's going to be a sad situation for the D-3 community.
Vivian, I have a question.
Sure.
You said that the, that the neighbors already have gone through this, how, how have they gone through this already, with the noise and the disruption and the traffic?
I think she meant, you meant other people in town?
I, I meant, I, I was referring for the Foxfire and the fact that it's, it's known that amplified music is an issue in this type of geographic location, that there's no way to mitigate it, because especially in a tent where there's no walls to, to block the sound, it, it carries, it carries for miles, the mountains reflect the noise.
Well, the tractor trailers coming down 28 reflect the noise just as well.
And that's another reason to avoid having delivery trucks turning in from Route 28 in a passing lane, which that is, it's a 55 mile an hour passing lane, where people pass on that lane. We had a neighbor that said that when she pulls out of her driveway, which is right next door, she has to look for cars that are passing in the passing lane that she doesn't see until the last minute, and then if she, if she tries to turn, she's turning in front of another.
People driving.
But we're not in charge of people driving, but we're in charge of trying to eliminate a hazard, a potential hazard, to this area by putting in something new that has never been there before. That's the, to me, that's the issue, it's new, it's new, it's never been there, we have seen what happens with wedding venues that are not regulated in this town, and like Mr. Gutman said, we are running a big risk if we approve this project of having other venues just pop up everywhere.
Now, just for conversation's sake, up in Almeria is the Full Moon Resort, it's a huge place. Across the street from it are houses. These people live there all year round, they have, see, delivery trucks going in and out, they came and they did say to the planning board, there's going to be loud music, dah, 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 we don't want it, and all this other business, which we understood, but they mitigated the sound, they put in the sound, I don't know what they call it.
Monitors.
Yeah, the monitors, right? And ever since then, they're having weddings up there every weekend, every weekend.
And every weekend, people in Beginian can hear the music, just ask them, ask Ruby, you guys.
Um, is this a temporary tent situation?
At the beginning it was, he's been building buildings since then.
So they're, they're holding inside and.
Buildings that you voted on.
Yes. But they had tents before them, but they're there very long.
But right now, they're having no sound problems?
Probably so now, it's because they built.
But they, they are not having their weddings in a tent outside?
No, some of them are, because in the summer, they don't want to be indoors, they want it outdoors, they want to give stream, they want to take their pictures there, they want all their family around.
Right, that's how weddings are done.
The vistas that we have in the valley.
That's how weddings are done, yeah.
So that's been going on.
Let's move on, let's, we've discussed this at length, let's move on to the secret determination.
We have one person that wants to speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have spoken the whole time.
Go ahead.
My name is Jeanie Maloney. I lived next door to the motel for 40 years. Wait, wait, wait. Hang on a second, wait a minute.
Nobody's going to hear you.
Okay, I'll come up. I'll sit. Thank you. Thank you. As I said, my name is Jeanie Maloney. I lived next door to the motel for 40 years. It was a tiny motel, few rooms, the people come, they park their cars, they sleep, they get up in the morning, they go out for breakfast, they're gone all day. This is 75 people with a tent with amplified music, I already have people from the Leeway pulling into my driveway, thinking I'm part of them, and then sometimes pulling out on my lawn. My porch, and you can measure it, is 25 feet away from the back of the motel, the main building. I would like you to put yourself in my place and think, how would I feel and what would I do? Would I try to do something about, something like this every weekend from June until whenever, 13 events, which will probably start trucks on Thursdays, tent on Friday, rehearsal dinner, wedding, afterparties after the 10:30 shut-off, and this is my life, this is what I have to look forward to because of this, this is my life. Put yourself in my position, would you like this life in the summer for your life every weekend, for days at a time? The amplified music, the traffic, the crowds, people pulling into your driveway, headlights, car doors slamming, hooting and hollering, people drinking, would you like this next door to you for the whole summer, every single weekend? This is your weekend, so imagine your weekend every summer, every single summer, every weekend, this is your life. Just think about it, just think about it, no matter what they say about mitigation, there's, there's going to be noise when you have 75 people and all these other things going on, and it's not going to be one day, it's going to be extended, and imagine if this is your life, think about this, would you like this to be your life? I'm going to ask you, and you, and you, Vivian, and you, Cliff, and you, Mr. Shiner, and you, Mr. Spiotta, I, I just can't think of your name right now, but I know your name. Yes, this is, this would be your life, even Leanne, Grace, Olivia, this is your life, this is what you're wishing on me, and if you do this, I feel like I'm the one who's going to be sacrificed to have this be done, so somebody else can make more money, so I can lose my property values. A local real estate realtor from Phoenisha, the oldest one in Phoenisha, I said, how's this going to affect my property values? She said, it's going to take it down like $50,000 minimum. Okay, so is this what you would like for your property? Is this your future? This is my future, so please, have a heart, and thank you for letting me speak, because I'm the one who is most affected by this, I'm right next door, and this is my life.
So are we.
I just want to say, it is my life, everything that she said, so I live next to Foxfire, and I have lost my peace on my property, I've discovered that the town has looked away in the 10 years Foxfire has been there, they started off saying they wouldn't have more than 75 people a wedding, the next year, they went to 18 weddings, now they're doing 140 weddings, I can testify to the huge delivery trucks, the drunk people walking down the road, and I do feel like this town sometimes puts businesses above private property owners, I've been in that same house for 45 years, you think that this brings all this money into the town, none of the delivery trucks going to Foxfire are local, maybe they're from Ulster County, but they're not from Shandaken, and they've been paying taxes for 10 years now, me and my mother have been paying taxes for 35 years, along with the other people on our road, the other people on our road have been paying property taxes for up to 40 years, and I feel like I have not seen oversight from the town on Foxfire, I do not feel the special permit had enough mitigations or restrictions put on them, I lie in bed, the traffic goes until 12:30 at night, and I listen to car after car after car going by, these people matter enough, even if the noise doesn't travel through the valley, these people matter, every single one of them, this is their home, the visitors who come here, they come here to the wedding venue, then they go home. They can't escape their homes. This is our homes. And I think there needs to be a whole evaluation of how we view tourism and visitors and how we treat your community members. And that our tax pay should matter and our history should matter. And when Ted Denman spoke to the board some months ago, and he quoted to you, "All we want is to sit on our porch and hear the crickets," that broke my heart when I heard him, which is why I care so much about what's happening to them, not just because of me. I think he died the next day. And I know what it feels like to feel like your home is being threatened and the town is not caring for it. So, I mean, really, it's not a small thing to think about them. The lawyer may say there's no legal basis for it, but there is in the code that provides protection for the community members. And that's just not a nothing code. That is a legal thing written into the code. And I don't think it should just be, I think it should be given more weight. And I need to talk to you more about Fox fire another time. Thank you.
Congratulations, Molly, well done.
I have another case law that might be the last.
I have something to say.
Okay, sorry.
Now, this, I sympathize with Ms. Maloney, I understand, but there are other things going on in town that are just as intrusive and annoying. Well, inundated with.
Too long, don't break them, right? Come on, Joanne.
No, no, wait a minute. There are Airbnbs all over this town that are okay by this town.
Wedding venues are much bigger and very different.
Please let, please let Joanne.
They are up all night, they're shooting air guns 3 o'clock in the morning. And I'm in Big Indian, and I'm already feeling that it's worse in other places. Up in Chichester and in Phoenisha, this stuff is going on. I have a friend that lives on 28. She has one next door to her. There's 19 people there every weekend, they're screaming. She had to call the police every weekend.
How did that happen? How did that come about?
Well, not from us. We didn't hear that.
Let's, let's.
You're talking about a small town going to hell in a handbag. And that's what happens. That's what happens. So what you're living with is what you're anticipating we're all into.
Right, we're all living with this. So, well, where, where can we go? What can we do? We're not allowed to go.
We're, let's keep moving forward.
I, I have, I have something to say and to address that, which is that to try and avoid that, the Airbnb law restricted gatherings to less than 20 people at an Airbnb. That was the only non-contemptious part of the Airbnb law because all the people in town who addressed this topic knew that parties were the big problem with Airbnbs. And your examples also go to the point that we can't enforce.
No, we can't.
We can't enforce. And so our, the only thing we can do to prevent something that has such an impact on the neighbors is to deny it in the first place. Because mitigation is only possible with enforcement.
This is the comprehensive plan is being rewritten because everyone is aware that times have changed since the original code was written. That's ongoing.
Comprehensive plans are dust collectors, that's all they are. They sit on a shelf and they collect dust.
They do.
But let's, all right, let's move on.
I have, I have two more case laws. Okay. Snyder &amp; Snyder LLP. It's a ZBA case law update from 2023. This presentation outlines how seasonal or repeated use may be interpreted as nontemporary, especially when it becomes a regular feature of the properties.
We already said we didn't consider it temporary.
Okay, but when they're talking about the, the tent being temporary that they're going to take down and bring up, I mean, they're making a big case that it's, it's not going to stay up there in relation to the secret.
But we, we told them the use is not considered temporary. That's, in fact, that was the minutes you corrected.
Right. But they're saying that it will be temporary in sense of environmental impact. And there's something else I wanted to mention about the site plan. I know that this water course, not, it's not a water course, it's a drainage swale on the site plan?
As determined by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection.
Correct. However, it is right on the edge of the proposed tent site. And I looked at the parcel viewer map, and it is actually a blue line on the parcel viewer that goes all the way up to the top of Mount Tremper, and it starts at a lake. And in the rainstorm, that is the drainage from that whole area underneath Route 28 and right past where the parking area is going to be, and right past the tight, the tent site, because there's no other room to put parking in a tent site on that site. So I actually live on Plank Road where there are a lot of those seasonal streams. They, they dry up, they're, in the rainy period, they.
Ephemeral streams.
That what they call, okay. Ephemeral streams. But when they're not ephemeral, when there's a flood situation, they become a torrent, and they can wash things away in no time at all. And I'm concerned that the site of this tent being right next to it, in fact, it looks like there originally was a drawing on this map where it showed the line being right in the middle of the drainage swale, and it was changed so that it was made narrower.
No, that's just depicting the length and width of the tent. Those are just indicators of the length.
Okay, so it looks on this site plan that the tent is right on the drainage swale.
Those are dimension lines. Those are dimension lines.
But it was changed, there's, they're crossed out.
No, nothing was changed.
And this, just a cross out?
No, that's just dimension lines.
Then, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's not, I mean, the actual, the actual location of the tent is, is off of the side of the drainage swale, but it's so close that unless, unless I actually see it with a site visit, I don't know whether there's danger of that actual site flooding in a heavy rainstorm. Okay, the neighbor is saying there is. The other issue, and I'm, I'm doing secret stuff, so I'm, I'm not really duplicating. Assuming, which I don't know whether that's the case, I don't know how level the parking area actually is without a site visit.
So again, there's topographical lines on the survey that show that is a level area of the project site.
I'm assuming it's level enough that you're proposing, yeah.
How, what's the spacing on those?
I'm looking, but.
So the, those topo lines are two foot contours.
All right, so you're looking at.
Okay, I'm looking at these, yeah.
From there to there.
Okay, what about these areas?
A few percent slope.
That's.
This is actually drop, okay, that's the swell. Okay.
Yeah, because there's somebody else waiting to act in.
Yes, all right.
Okay.
Does somebody have the?
Okay, so concerning the proposed parking spots. Now, it's understood that there, there is no ability legally to put any amendment to the surface on a grassy slope in the floodway. Is that correct?
That's correct. We are not doing any sort of asphalt, any sort of stone for the parking. The only thing that we are doing for the parking is we are doing the tubs, which are detailed on page three, and some basic little fiberglass quarter inch diner rods that you'd use around your driveway for piloting purposes, just to make sure that those spots are properly demarcated. So when the cars get parked there, they are in spots and they are not scattered beyond that area.
Okay, so understood that there, there's no way to amend this surface should the grass be eroded to the point of not existing? And then at that point, there will be bare dirt, which gets wet in the rain and will become mud. I think the practicality of that is, is in question. And I am concerned that without enforcement, that it would be very tempting to actually amend the surface since it's an area where you can't see it from Route 28, and we don't have town inspectors.
The town, Building Inspector, Floodplain Administrator has been assigned. They have weighed in on this. They have told us we cannot do any modifications on the site for the parking, therefore is deleted from the plans.
I'm sorry, parking is deleted from the plans?
No.
No, the.
Any sort of modification.
Oh, no, no, it's not in.
The surface or parking.
It's not, it's not on the plans.
Yes, it was deleted from the plans per, per the town's request.
I, I, right.
We deleted those.
Right, and that's proper, that's proper. I'm, I'm concerned about the surface that the guests will be on when they're inside the tent. What is the proposal for that? Are they going to be also buried?
That is more as well to most, that would be there other than laundry. Sometimes you'll see at some events where they may put some.
Just floors down or something like that for.
And will they be dancing?
I'm sure there's dancing at every wedding.
Okay, so it will be probably a platform underneath the tent. I mean, that seems reasonable that you would want that.
Yes, please, I would love to.
I, I, it doesn't sound very workable to assume that the grass is going to stay grass and that you're not going to want to put something for the comfort of the guests.
Designed to deny the project, sue an approval, whatever you have intentions in your head of doing. I can't, we, we've given you all the information we've had. You've made a lot inaccurate comments tonight. I really honestly.
I just wanted to bring that up in the context of cumulative effect and enforcement issues. And I have another, which may be the last quote here. Two quotes. Foley versus, First versus Foley. A determination of a local board concerning matters of zoning will be upheld if rational and supported by substantial evidence. And Rogers versus Baum. The court will not substitute its judgment for that of the local board. So the courts are generally reluctant to overrule a town board's determination. And that was the reason why the judge gave consideration to the ZBA's, the ZBA's ruling in the Brophy case. It's not that it was a black and white issue, it's because they could not find that the ZBA was grossly unreasonable. Okay.
We have to get back to the law, should we have to?
What's that?
Short form.
Oh, 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 okay. No.
Should be with the application.
No, because, do you remember at the last, at the last planning board meeting, we didn't have the file. We didn't have anything to look at. Now, we have a file, but I don't know how completed it, so I haven't had a chance to look at it. It might be in there. In fact, I think it probably is. It looks organized.
I think they're looking for part two of the EAF, not part one. Part two is your obligation to fill out as a planning.
Oh, okay, so that we're looking to fill it out, okay. So part one should be in our file.
It went with the initial application.
So Mr. Chair, what steps are we going to be taking unless we get the paperwork?
Determination of environmental impact. So we can't environmental impact. And once we've done that, do we think of moving on the site plan application, especially determined?
Thank you. It's part two. It's part three.
Oh, this is just the communication folder.
Okay. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? The only issue I have is the use table that prohibits it in the floodplain.
Yes.
Being that the predominant part of the accessory use will be, or the, sorry, not floodplain, floodway.
Floodway.
The floodway district.
The entire operation will be in the floodway.
Now, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the land? The choices are no or small impact or moderate to large impact.
Large. It's very large impact since there was no use whatsoever before this.
No or small, moderate to large.
I would say would be mild.
Will the proposed impact impair the character or quality of the existing community?
I think the community is within, with one voice in saying yes.
I don't think it impairs the character of the community.
No.
There's no events what's at all in that community.
A bus depot, an empty farm stand, and a house that used to be a dump.
That's not relating to noise.
With all due respect, you should let other members of the board voice their opinions just like you were allowed to.
Not just yours, yes.
It's a conversation, sir.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or existing infrastructure of mass transit, biking, or walkway?
It will have an impact.
But not an adverse change.
Yes.
Thousands of cars on 28 every day.
Yes, but potential for accidents is high.
Will the.
They're driving by, they're not coming in and out of the small.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies, public or private wastewater treatment facilities?
No.
Very possibly, if the cars stay.
This, let us, let us log now, come on.
You, I mean, come on.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Okay, part three. For every question in part two that was answered, moderate to large impact may occur, or if there is need to explain why a particular element of the proposed action may or will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact, please complete part three. Part three should in sufficient detail identify the impact, including any measures or design elements that have been included by the project sponsor to avoid or reduce impacts. Part three should also explain how the lead agency determined that the impact may or will not be significant. Each potential impact should be assessed considering its setting, probability of occurring, duration, irreversibility, geographic scope and magnitude. Also consider the potential for short term, long term, and cumulative impacts. So we've only got one and two, which were the, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? And the biggest issue I see with that is that zoning use table that is prohibited. The accessory use is prohibited in a, in a floodway.
They, they don't have noise listed on this short form.
Your report is given by the state.
But the state, the document I have from the state does, does say noise.
Are you just looking at a part two from a full EAF? Because you guys are reviewing a short EAF.
I'm just, I'm just reading the determining significance worksheet.
It's from a, from a law firm or something. It's like a summary. A summary.
You're using the correct form.
Yeah, no, this is the, this is the official.
What was the second item?
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
I think it's small, temporary.
It's either small. It's small, it's no or small or moderate to large.
I would say moderate to large. The intensity of use of the land is from zero to several days of many people going there.
Okay, so we got, we got a moderate?
Small.
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 I look.
It's only, it's only so few people.
But it's several days, it's only several days.
Okay.
So is it just the one that goes on?
So it's just the one, it's the zoning, it's the zoning use table. The fact that it's prohibited.
I, I have a question that we really didn't address. Is how many days is this wedding going to extend? Is this a one evening? Or is this like somebody brought up, a rehearsal dinner and other things that are planned for that particular event?
Events per year.
Yes, but how long does each event last? One day only, or could be the morning before?
Traditional, people arrive on a Friday, just like every other wedding. You might have an occasional Friday wedding. Those are becoming more and more popular as things get more and more expensive. Saturday wedding, people leave on Sunday, the tent comes down.
So three days.
The wedding is just one day. But guests, as they always do, will utilize the lodge.
Well, that's, that's not a change in the existing use. You already have guests at the motel. at the motel.
Vivian, I will say, you are wildly against this project, you should have accused yourself when I requested it in the beginning of the meeting.
Do you know, I feel that I'm being harassed here.
I'm a liar.
I'm harassed.
All right, come on, come on. So, check, all right.
I'm being harassed for having, we are here to, we are here to have an opinion on this matter. I'm being harassed for expressing an opinion when I'm actually, yes, I've talked for two hours on matters of fact rather than opinion, and Juan has asked me to elaborate on the facts I was giving, which I did. I don't think there is any way that you could say that I was predominantly expressing an opinion.
We're just trying to move forward, Vivian.
Well, and I would like to, I would like to not be harassed. He's accusing me.
That's why I stopped the conversation, so we could move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, do we agree that it's a negative declaration of significant environmental impact?
I don't agree.
Okay, we need, all right, well, we're gonna vote on it.
You motion?
A motion.
So moved.
Yes, to a negative environmental declaration.
Joanne Cal?
Yes.
Alan Shiner?
Yes.
Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
No.
Juan Rosales?
Yes.
Chandra Valenti?
Yes.
Moving on to a vote on whether we accept this site plan as submitted. And with the conditions set forth, do we have those in front of us?
Yeah, I would move that we approve the application, special use permit, with the fifteen conditions noted on Mr. Gottlieb's letter, page fourteen, his letter of September seventeenth.
It's not a special use permit, is everybody on page with that? It is not a special use permit.
Did I misspeak? If I did, I apologize.
Grace, what is it?
The board, like, you'd clear it by now.
Yes, they would.
You are on board.
Well, tell the man whose mission's working in the public.
If this project requires a site plan approval.
I, so the minutes actually were, were a little bit ambiguous on whether it was, because special permit was mentioned in the minutes, so maybe that's not.
That is the document that I sent to you that stated that the use was allowed, I said that it was allowed.
I would like to withdraw my statement because I misspoke.
Go ahead, Sam.
I move that we approve, let me get this right, the site plan application?
The site plan, sure.
Okay. Contingent upon the fifteen conditions, page fourteen of the Gottlieb letter dated September seventeenth.
And that includes the lookback provision?
The what?
That includes the lookback provision?
Yes, this is, I take number fourteen.
I think we need to read what those, because I'm not sure what those modifications are. Where is it?
It's in your folder.
Please.
Where?
Would you mind reading the folders in the sand?
That's the motion, though, and she's gonna vote no.
There's a motion on the table, it has to be over.
But I need to know what's in the motion.
Shall I read them?
Yes, please.
Okay, all events shall have a maximum capacity of seventy-five persons. The leeway shall be limited to no more than thirteen events per calendar year. The proposed event tent shall be installed prior to an event and taken down after such event occurs within a reasonable amount of time. The leeway shall notice the town building department, town of Shandate and police department, Shandate Town, Town of Shandate and fire department, and adjacent neighbors of all planned events three months prior to such events occurring or as soon as practicable. Prior to an event occurring, the leeway shall coordinate with the town of Shandate and police department for review of traffic management plan. The leeway shall install noise monitoring devices in the designated locations on the project site. All events shall occur on Friday or Saturdays and shall conclude at eleven P.M., and music shall conclude at ten thirty P.M. The leeway shall not place any permanent structures, impervious service, or fill within the designated floodplain without a permit. The leeway shall continue to coordinate with NISDOT related to any mandatory state improvement, pardon, mandatory traffic improvements. All events shall utilize portable toilets, which will be delivered prior to events and taken away after events, the existing bathroom within the floodplain area will not be used. All events shall be catered by licensed food vendors currently permitted with valid operating permits from the Elstor County Department of Health by ten New York, NYCR sub, part fourteen, food service establishments as applicable. Twelve, there will be no use of fireworks. Thirteen, there will be no balloons or sky lamps released into the air. Fourteen, the applicant shall seek renewal of the special use permit, which is where I get a little confused, I guess. Granted herein for the accessory event, free use no later than November thirty, twenty twenty-six. Renewal of the special use permit shall be reasonably reviewed by the planning board for consistency with the conditions herein and not unreasonably withheld. Fifteen, nothing within this resolution or approval shall impact the existing lodge operations of the leeway.
I, I, I have a question. What if they violate, what happens if they violate the terms of this permit?
I think this board needs a separate conversation on enforcement and the comprehensive plan. We are dealing with things that need to be addressed in enforcement and comprehensive plan, so I'm with you, Vivian, let's have that conversation, we need to move on with this matter.
Well, I think that's relevant to whether we approve something with a, a year of approval when there's a possibility.
It's addressed in my September seventh letter, I have three paragraphs that address the code enforcement officer's ability to enforce site plan conditions. It's becoming more and more evident that you're not reading what I am submitting.
I want to, I want to make sure it's in this document here.
It's in it, it's in it, it's in one year.
It's part of.
No, I, I wanna know what the, what the options of the town are, if there's not compliance within that year.
Not to allow, to continue.
That's what I wanna make clear.
Shall seek renewal.
But they, do they have carte blanche for a year, or do we have enforcement ability? That's what I'm asking.
We don't have any enforcement.
Then how is it enforced within that year?
That's a zoning enforcement officer. We need a separate conversation on enforcement, it's clearly becoming an issue.
May I, uh, hope for a...
No, 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 no.
No more.
No more.
How will the residents be aware of? We have a motion on the board.
We have a motion on the table.
And we read the notes of the conditions as requested by our board.
Okay, yeah.
Did we have a second on the motion?
Second. Clifford Buffo?
I just wanna, I'm gonna be very brief, I promise. The, this board, I've worked with these, most of these people a long time, we're all community members, we all try very hard, we all try very hard to take the, the applicant's point into view and the community members as well, okay? We all live here, we're all volunteers, we get nothing out of this, in fact, quite the opposite, detriment to our lives and our livelihoods. But I do it to try and get back to the community. I wanna say, this applicant has been very, very readily, readily complied with our requests and thorough, which I do appreciate. The neighbors have very much been heard, and I do appreciate your, your concerns as well. And it's the point about it being in my backyard, okay? That being said, based purely on the use table, that it says, you can, the predominant portion of this accessory use, in my view, falls in the floodway, being the tent itself, I have to vote no, based on that section of code on one sixteen, twenty-four, and twenty-five. You could go to the zoning board and possibly find relief from that, but that's, that's my vote. Well, I'll say, we are in the flood fringe overlay district, which I, in my seven, in my September seventeenth letter... The tent is in the floodway.
There's no more discussion here.
Yes, that's my, that's my vote, we're moving on.
Yes.
Alan Shiner?
I just wanna make a statement, too. It's, it's up to the board here to give their opinion, and this is not so much about facts, but the board has the ability to say whether a project should be built that doesn't fit the zoning that the town has laid out. The town has laid out residential zoning. And I think, without giving specifics, that this goes against one sixteen, twenty, which means that the impact of this project is significant and not what was intended for a residential neighborhood. All the things that we have been discussing that, that have been brought up go beyond what I think is my opinion should be in a residential neighborhood, so I'm voting no.
Congratulations.
Okay, Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
No.
Juan Rosales?
Yes.
Chandra Valenti?
Yes.
Motion. Motion passed. Let me say one more thing. Is the, is the owner of the motel here?
I work there.
Uh, I think that some of the statements that were made by the architect and the lawyer are naive, and that concerns me. I don't think you'll be able to live up to what you agreed to.
I agree.
Okay? You're not gonna take the tent down every week.
What?
You're not gonna take the tent down.
Mr. Chair, I don't think this is appropriate.
Alan.
Alan, you can't say that.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think, that's common sense, I think you should be allowed to say a common sense statement.
It's the vote, the vote, the vote's over, it's been approved.
The vote's over.
You don't need to defame the applicant in the proper way.
That's right.
You defend us.
You defend us by saying we don't have the authority to deny an accessory use.
I'm just giving you my opinion, I'm not defending you.
No, that's not, that's not defaming you.
I'm just saying that the applicant's...
That's applying, he's allowed to do that.
Not you, the applicant.
I've been called enough names this evening, I think we're done. Thank you, everyone, for your time, thank you.
Hey, hey, moving on. I just have one little request, or, or...
No, it's, this is over.
How does the resident, how did, how did residents get advised that when the events were taken for you?
Call the building, call, call the building.
You're gonna give us a three-month advance notice.
Talk, talk to the building inspector.
Oh. And is any questions, any problems?
Sure, a lot of them, but that's not in the...
It's in the letter.
Real ones.
Okay. So before you guys, I'm really sorry, I gotta cut, my kids sitting at home since nine o'clock at night.
Thank you, Chris.
I apologize.
You're fine.
And your next officer, in my opinion, it's not, it requires like a approval, and consider whether or not you want help through the fire medical aspect of the...
Is this at the water treatment center?
Yeah. Joyce, I apologize.
All right. Comes back and takes them down every Sunday, 'cause we get one like every week.
Because they need them, and you put them there every week.
Right, and then sometimes it's different sizes, everyone.
Out of one person.
Okay, all right, let's get the, let's get the next applicant. Yeah, let's do it. You never tell me when anyone is... They'll be back in here. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Hello.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm Jonathan from Couch Lake, law firm at a home leader for the applicant, with the applicant is Steve McDonough, and with the engineering firm, Dustin and Sam, and Robert Kousel. We're here for, what I think is, give Rob a second.
It feels easy now, doesn't it?
So what I, what we're here for is what I consider a relatively small accessory solar facility for the wastewater treatment plant. We gave you kind of a project narrative about the project, we kinda laid out a couple things, including seeker.
Was that you guys?
Uh, that was from Rob's office.
Okay.
But on behalf of the applicant.
There were a couple, like, I think two people were here before us already.
Yes, that was from the applicant, same applicant, I believe they were here for a couple workshops. That person's not here tonight, but, yes.
But it was your, your firm?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I, I thought it was a different applicant, different applicant.
Same, yes. So, as I mentioned, small accessory project, behind-the-meter project, so it's essentially generates at the facility, access goes on to the grid, they get a credit for it, all that good stuff. Type two under seeker for the regulations, I think we agree with the ZEO that says we need site plan approval, that's over here. I don't know if you have any questions for me, I'll, for now, I'll turn over to Steve, Steve can give you an overview of the, the applicant, and Rob can go over details of the site.
Our, our biggest concern when you were here last was screening.
Yes, we'll, we'll definitely address that. My name is Steve McDonough, I'm director of development for Amresco.
Yep, problem.
And you probably remember my colleague, Sam Kane, he was here, and I know, you know, an issue of screening came up, so we'll address that, but, yeah, so we're here, Amresco is a ward of the projects, along with several other projects for the New York Department of Environmental Protection, in conjunction or in partnership with the New York Power Authority, the Department of City Administrative Services. So it's the Pine Hill facility, else some of the local facilities, Kingston and Margertville. So Amresco, we're gonna build, own, and operate the system, the Pine Hill wastewater treatment plant, they will be purchasing the electricity for the system. And I believe we had two meetings before, and the one area that came up was a vegetative screen-in, and Sam was here, Sam Kane was here back in July, and he brought renderings of the vegetative screen-in, I believe the board saw those renderings and found them satisfactory, so at this stage, Rob Bukowski, our consultant, on the civil and, or environmental engineering side, is gonna go through more details of the project, but if you happen to answer any questions, if you have any for me.
Yeah, I have a question about the screening. So you said, what did you show us for the screening? You showed us a little diagram like that, or?
Uh, we showed renderings the last time, so I think Rob has... I have renderings.
Of the screening?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just give a real quick overview. So the, the overall capacity of the system is under half a megabot, it takes up about two and a half acres of the property in total. Access is gonna be from east through an existing gravel drive, and because of all the utilities that are underneath, the foundations will actually be balanced, meaning there'll be concrete blocks rather than driven into the ground. Concern with DEP is just any damage to their existing underground infrastructure. So we've, Amresco's gone back and forth with DEP, considering the type of facility is and the security, they wanna make sure that the screen doesn't completely obscure everything so that they can see into the site. So what they came back with was a mixture of juniper, mountain laurel, and rhododendron, and I can hand out these renderings. So the, the first one is from the westernmost side of the site, and then the next one is a little bit further down.
So you're gonna be committed to keeping these babies alive, or if they die, you're gonna replace them?
Typically, when they're bought, they have a warranty.
But the answer is here, anyway. Whether or not they have a warranty.
I can't answer that.
I have a question, but the last one, I understood that these panels, these old panels, are going behind the buildings.
No, no, they're in front of the buildings. They face away from, they face away from the road, they're tilted away from the road.
Because you're looking at the back of the...
That was my problem, I don't like that, looking at the back of them.
And that's why there's vegetative screen-in, that, to answer your question, we're required to maintain the vegetative screen-in, so, yeah, they're healthy, and, yeah, that's part of our...
Who is, who is gonna be, is responsible for maintaining?
That's part of Amresco, that's in our operational maintenance agreement? Yeah.
Are they planted to water in case of drought, which we had a serious drought this past year and in previous years it happens to?
And they have, they have to maintain them, if they die, they have to replace them.
Okay, but I'm just suggesting that that may be necessary to avoid having them die.
Yeah, that's correct.
Do these panels serve anything besides the water, is this for the water treatment center or... Is the screen for the water treatment center, or will it serve our home?
It's just a wastewater treatment system, it's a behind-the-meter system, so it'll be offset in their energy use, electricity use.
It's net metered?
Um, yes, but they will be consuming everything on-site.
It's less than energy use?
Yes.
It's like a touch over half, it's essentially about half of what they use.
Like 24 cents.
Yeah, so they'll never... So they'll never, yeah. Optimistically, it's about half, so reality, yeah, they'll never produce more.
Yeah, but there are times when they may not use electricity and other times when they use more. Does it get back into the grid?
Be ready.
If that's the case, it would, but there'd be very limited times, because it's only producing energy during the day, that's when the wastewater treatment plant is operating.
Oh.
Yeah, so it would have to be, like, shut down the wastewater treatment.
So if no one flushes their toilet, they'll be in my cell, they'll go back to the grid.
If I see it goes in...
Can someone tell me how high the fences and rubber dents are?
The chain link?
Yeah.
Six, eight feet?
It's an existent fence.
This is a rendering attached to a photo, yeah. This is not.
Yeah, that's an existent fence.
That is the height.
I know, but I recall the last time Ruggi was here, we stated that this fence was too high, that they never got a permit to have this fence that high. I think it's like 10 feet.
I don't think it's a 10-foot-high fence.
Just curious.
Okay.
And is there battery stored on this side?
Nope, there's no battery storage associated with this, so...
Where does the power go?
It's a behind-the-meter system, so it'll be offset in the energy from the wastewater treatment plant.
It's saying only energy generated is staying on-site? It's not going into the net grid?
Correct.
It's that needed...
It's possible, it's net metered, like...
But now it will go there.
They use only...
It's also flood zone?
Yeah, they'll be using, but it'll offset about 50% of the electricity needs of the facility.
The reason I ask is I'm trying to remember if this is even a permitted use. I'm trying to see, what is this use? And the closest thing I can come up with is public utility.
Grace calls these accessory structures.
Accessory?
Yeah, that's what we do with the Zen.
Because we don't have, we consider them accessory structures. And we consider each whole array an accessory structure. So as long as they're all connected, it's one array.
One.
One accessory. Because we don't, our code doesn't specifically deal with that.
So it's a permitted use?
It's a permitted use.
Yes.
You said it is in the flood?
This is the correct, the property information, right? The 8811? This SPL number?
It's in the Mar 105.
Right, but I have it in, not just the flood zone, but half of it in the floodway. I'm using the SPL that's in the 414146.
Come on.
Come, come, take a look. So I just put it in the parcel viewer, 414146. There's the property outlined, right?
But in your zoning map, it's not.
My zoning map? This is my FEMA map.
The flood zone? If you're looking, if you're showing me the FEMA map, I don't think the upper part of the property is.
So it's outlining it, right? And especially that red is the floodway, the yellow just being on here.
Yeah, I don't, I can't.
I just want to be sure that I'm using the right.
That looks like the shape of the parcel.
Looks like the what?
That looks like the shape of the parcel.
Okay. Okay, so just...
But we'll double check.
Is there a problem with the application? Is there an accuracy?
I guess, no, if they have the right, if this is the right SPL number and address, I'm showing it in the floodway.
So they need a new ride, they need a floodplain development permit? Have you guys?
Well, double check them, I don't recall it being in the flood map, but we'll look.
Yeah, that's not working.
As you heard.
Yeah, we can't move forward with that in question. I mean, sometimes there are inaccuracies on the FEMA map, so you guys, but your surveyor would have to make that determination.
We'll have Rob take a look at it.
Yeah. Personally, I don't see any other issues. I mean, the screening was adequate to me.
The only other thing that I don't know the status of is if 239 was sent to the county yet or not. Would not be surprised if it wasn't done yet, but...
Guess what?
239, the GML 239 referral was sent to the county.
Yep, here's another number. Same shape. There it is.
You know, the parcel view is not always correct.
Yeah. Well, and the maps are not always correct, either. They're kind of...
No, I find it, I know.
Sorry, I can't see from here, so I'm sure it's impossible to see from there. There's a floodplain line in the back. So see this dotted hatch line? That's the floodplain, so...
It's on C101?
Uh, yeah, that's right, C101. So the actual system that's proposed in the front, that area is outside the floodzone. The floodzone is limited to the back, and then there's a new pocket.
Okay, so in a case like that, where you're saying it's out of the flood, because...
What's that label, what's that line labeled as on your map there? I see zone X.
It's floodplain line. It's a dash with two dots.
Okay. So it's just a matter, then, of an elevation certificate showing that the structure's going to be outside of it. Because you see, it is heavier down below, right?
Where's 28, sorry, it's...
Oh, I just have the property pull up, let me see. See the property? You see that blue, that's floodway?
Yeah.
In the yellow, but probably on this end...
It's all, see the blue in the back, it's all behind. So this line represents what you're looking at there, is this hatch.
All right. Say, even for the structure itself, you want it to be elevated enough to be safe, right?
Can I point it to you? Yeah, I see this line.
It's this.
Oh, it's right there.
Yeah, see this hatch? So you can see that it goes behind the building, this little area here, where we're proposing the development is all.
In the front.
Yeah.
So you're not in the floodway?
No.
Flood, or floodplain?
Right.
Floodplain, okay.
Neither floodplain nor floodway.
I don't know.
Here. Actually, just kind of...
I know, let's...
I'm looking at this, it's assigned to CLA and engineer. So I'm going to go by that.
Okay.
Is that engineer in the room?
Yes.
Bukowski?
Yeah.
Are you Bukowski?
I am.
Am I pronouncing it correctly?
You are.
Can you come, I have a question up here. Do you mind stepping up, please? So we have, here, demarcations here, we have that dash, double dot for the floodplain line, right? We have it there, and we have it here, right? What's that line?
I think the different floods are all...
I see A and X.
Yeah, so A means it's based on an elevation. I'm glad I can confirm which one's which, but, you know, we're...
But there's no secondary line missing up here?
No.
Where are the power lines going to be? The utility lines running? They're probably right here, I'm just not seeing them.
The proposed lines?
Yeah, for this system.
Steve, do you know, the lines that go from the transformer back to the building? Sorry, what's the question?
Well, primarily off the array, all the new stuff you'll be adding, the stuff coming off the array back to the building.
Uh, yeah, they'll be tied directly to the, into electrical room.
But where?
So where?
Is the, Eric, maybe you can help where the array is? This will be ballasted, so we're going to have everything above ground, they're typically on concrete ballast, like a conduit. This is the electrical room here, isn't it?
What do you mean by ballasted? Like railroad tracks?
No, they're concrete ballasts, all of the racket, because there's underground utilities in this area.
So nothing will be buried, in other words?
Nothing will be buried, yeah.
Okay. So you can, yeah, you can't dig there. DigSafe says no.
DEP says no.
I don't see an issue. Are you going to, are you going to plant, like, decent-sized plants? You're not going to, we're not going to start with this, and in 15 years, we'll have screening.
They're specified, the heights, you know, in the plans.
Where are they? Where is that specified?
He's going to get that. There are specifications, I believe, on the second page of the site plans.
Are the solar panels fixed in angle, or are they rotated, like some of the new installations I've seen?
They'll be fixed till solar panels.
Fixed though.
Correct.
And they're facing, I guess, towards the mountains, they're relatively...
Yeah, facing south. Yep, facing south, away from the road.
And how high off the ground will the top of the solar panel be?
Uh, the bottom's about three feet, the top will be about 10 feet.
So the top will be 10 feet from the...
From the ground. Yeah.
So the plants, are they going to be 10 feet?
No, but the roadway is elevated, so, yeah, so it's kind of, the array is, you know...
It's lower down?
Down below the road.
And then steer me towards the plant height.
There's, we just, so I think these are five or six feet that are shown in the renderings, but also some of that. The detail we have is just a typical plant detail.
Sure, stop. Fancy clip art. Yeah, the estimated mature height and planting height?
Yep.
I'd like to see, please. I think the screening's really important on this project.
Yeah. I think I have mature heights. The juniper, five to 25 feet. Mountain laurel, 12 to 15 feet. And rhododendron, five to 15 feet.
What do you have that to, huh?
Sorry?
Repeat the rhododendron again?
Five to 15.
Did they get monsters? If they're not, they're not for these.
They would be beautiful, let's say survive, but they are hard-shaped plants, the rubber dender and mountain laurel, you don't see them in close-sun areas. So I think that another choice is something that would get that large, but would survive in a full sun, not too regularly watered area would be a better choice. I think the juniper is probably good, but the mountain laurel and the rubber dender are hard-shaped plants. They're beautiful, but I don't think they would ever get that big.
Feel like we're running straight here, yeah.
We can check this DEP, we're somewhat limited to the plantings they'll allow, just due to security. So we wouldn't be able to, like, screen all things, like, providing...
Oh, but, so that you can't have a continuous plant.
That's right.
No, it's just...
Because of DEP's security requirements, they need to be able to have some visibility into the site.
And, and so...
I'm confused by that. You guys keep saying that they're concerned about security into the site, or like, DEP officers driving by and looking, that's the big, but there's not, like, someone on-site that could just be...
At night?
Security. But they're driving by at night and looking for flashlights, I guess.
They'll actually come in at night also.
With like a ski mask?
I mean, I hope the DEP officers have a ski mask.
Yeah, I don't, it seems fine.
Any other questions?
So we'll need you...
Just, yeah, plant specifications at the next, at the next meeting.
Yes.
I think that's about it. Are we...
All right, just like on the plants, some comment about maintaining them?
Sure, okay.
Yes.
You can do that.
So it's...
So you just have to plant them and go away?
Yeah. I don't think DEP will let us do that, anyway.
All right, stick.
So we need a motion for a public hearing?
Yeah.
Absolutely, schedule a public hearing.
Meeting is...
All in favor?
Aye.
We have to meet a date.
The 12th, I think, is the next.
12, 6:45?
November 12, 6:45?
Yes.
Don't be telling me, it's expectation.
What else is on the agenda? Do you have anything else on the agenda? Good night, good night, thank you very much.
Check that out, please. Let me know about that, right?
Yeah, no, it's...
I guess, I'll be raised.
You shoot me a email, I can...
Yeah, just reach out, we'll be known. Thank you. Keep those to yourself.
I should take, let me just write this down.
Do we have any other?
No, nothing else.
That's us.
So make a motion, we're going to have a discussion.
All right, discussion.
I just, I want to make a motion that we notify the town board that we need a special joint meeting to talk about comprehensive plan and enforcement. We are continually being forced to make decisions based on our law, which we may have outrun. And we're facing community opposition that is basically in opposition to what the law says is allowed. So I move that we request, before the end of this year, a special joint meeting, planning board, town board, to talk about the comprehensive plan and enforcement. I don't want to sit here and take...
Pass that on to the comprehensive plan consultant.
You should, please.
Yeah, but we have to ask the town board if it's okay.
Because, you know, we're here, we're agonized over this stuff, I don't want to take a vote on something, and then anybody do whatever they want, because the enforcement isn't there.
They do, even with the EVs, and we all know that.
So that's my motion, that we request a special meeting, joint meeting of the town.
Would it be okay, oh, okay, I like your idea, I like your idea. I can bring it up with the consultants, because I have their contact information.
They would certainly be welcome.
And they do have a timeline for when they expect to actually start needing in the second phase of actually writing the comprehensive plan. But that, they're not expecting to be done with it until next spring.
I'm proud of what he thinks of it.
The dust collector.
Donald Shaw collects dust.
Yeah, but we have fixed... Anyway, I have a motion on the floor, and I think I heard a second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I can speak to Supervisor Disclafani tomorrow about it.
Great, so you'll put that, will you see something in writing?
Yes.
Can we have a, can we have a brief executive session? I know I hate to do this. Can we?
Yeah, to discuss...
To discuss today's meeting?
Yes. No camera?
Definitely off.
We can end the meeting if you want. Yes, end the meeting, and then we can have an executive session.
Can we do that? We don't have to come back?
No, no, we can't.
Oh, it's got to be during.
That's what I thought.
It has to be during.
Yeah, just shut it off.[1777.11]